Okay, I'm going to call the work session to order, I guess is the word. It is November 5th, 2018. This is the Anchorage School Board Work Session. All board members are present.
Can we add personnel to the executive session?
Okay. And for purposes of the executive session, we have negotiations and we need to add personnel on executive sessions, so when we move into that. All right, so at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Bishop and the show is yours.
All right, thank you, Madam President. At this work session, we were asked to do an assessment update. So we are going to, Mark and I, Dr. Stock and I, are going to share information about the PEAKs, but we're also going to couch that in one of the board's goals. And then we ask that each time that we do come back, we follow up with the board. There had been questions about math. That isn't going to be the focus of today, but there had been a question about our math change in regard to different uses of curriculum, and we're doing a study on that, as well as how the district did over time, our connected this survey. Tonight, we're going to share other things in regard to graduation rates. So really, today is about an update on one of the primary goals, one of the six, of course. And when I arrived at the district in 2011, the school board had established Destination 2020, which had, as we know, just to couch this in that information, six different performance areas and six different district initiatives. Once I came aboard, we started to write SMART goals on each of these, where we had a goal, but our work didn't always reflect reaching the goal of that 90 percent. So we began to do that, and in the area of performance, you'll see that the primary goals were really in reading, math, and college and career-ready students. But for purposes of today, we're going to go ahead and scale that back and talk about the reading and all the different types of assessments that we have in that category. To start, to understand where we want to go in our 90 percent, we start with understanding who we are. And I just wanted to share with the board, we are a, what's at the Council of Great City Schools called a minority-majority-based district now. Additionally, 80 percent of our families and our students speak English as their first language at home, and the other 20 percent have over 100 different languages, but the five most prevalent languages spoken in those 20 percent are those five that you see before Additionally, we have some cognitive, as well as non-cognitive, variables that school districts work with every day. Back in the 60s, there was a Jinx and Jinx Report that really established what was called Chapter One, which we know as Title One now, that didn't say, come out with causation, but basically said that there is a relationship between poverty and outcomes in kids. And that's the establishment of Title One, but it was called Chapter One back then. So we do, our largest variable on that chart is the economically disadvantaged, and that's primarily calculated, it's by free and/or reduced lunches. However, there are other federal programs that a person can qualify for, for that. So then we take a look at our need. What is our literacy need? It has been established for quite some time. In 2012, the Anchorage School Board first adopted more rigorous standards, and then the state followed that fall. So Anchorage, I believe, in March adopted Common Core state standards, went right with the federal standards, and the state of Alaska rewrote some of those, and then we had the standard wars, if you remember. But if you hold these side by side, they are very similar. Syntax is different. One of the things that Alaska standards does is talk about cursive and, as well as proficiency in math. So Alaska standards wanted to comment on cursive writing, and the Common School, Common Core state standards stayed silent at the federal level on that. Our last English Language Arts adoption was in 2005. Yep, yes, sir.
Comments on cursive?
They didn't have any comment. They didn't address cursive in the Common Core state standards. Yeah, they didn't have a...
They're leaving it up to school districts?
Correct. Correct. And our school district does. So the last English Language Arts adoption was 2005, but the last purchase was, I believe, in '08, '09. And actually, one school mentioned that they didn't get theirs till 2011, so we were researching that. So the Hope Mifflin that were purchased were back in '11. Our mobility rate is approximately 30 percent. If you only calculate students that actually move during a school year, the natural transitions of changing an elementary to a middle and middle to high is upwards of 40 to 42. So it would depend on how it was calculated, and Mark looked up different metrics, but if we wanted to really look at just students that transitioned in the middle of the year for a move, many times it's upward mobility, it's about 30 percent.
So that... Yeah.
That does not include students who've changed schools during the summer? So they come back in the fall to a different school, or does that capture that? Do you know?
It's, I believe, in the, in the school year, those changes in the school year.
So I've seen that higher in the past, and is that because we're looking at it differently now?
Correct. The metric that is used when you look at overall transientsy or mobility in a lot of the audits is for any student that has changed, and they do take into account sixth grade to seventh grade, because that is a whole new group of kids coming in and out. This, however, we just narrowed that down. We had shared before, and this is just presenting it again, Alaska changed its standards. If you can look back in 2005 nationally, and this is coming from Ed Week, which is Teaching Magazine, the standards were ranked at a D, a D, 2013, D-plus. Finally, the overall grade when the final adoption was made at the state level, you know, putting it forward with an assessment, Alaska was 13th in 2015. We've slipped to 22 because there are other states that increase their rigor as well. But this is just to demonstrate that the ask of children, which is then in turn an ask of our teachers, is different than it was before.
Mr. Donlin.
Going back to that 30 percent number of children moving from school to school, so that 30 percent represents how many of our kids changed schools during an actual school year?
We'll get the number, but it could be the same student over and over again. It's the percent of transientsy rate. It could be, if a student moves three times, they could be counted three different times. So it's not specifically just a student who moves once. We can get the actual calculations, the metric that we use. There's about three or four different metrics that we found that are used in the nation, as well as in our state, so we'll provide that. But we wanted to narrow it down that it wasn't natural transitions, it was literally students moving. It was our goal to find.
So that seems like a very, very important number to me, considering the current discussion we have about academic freedom. If our classrooms aren't running parallel, and 30 percent of our kids are moving from a school to another school, they're going to be faced with gaps in what their classroom instruction is. So I think that would argue for, I'm pretty amazed that it's 30 percent. I remember seeing some numbers last year and thinking, wow, that's really high, but really, really seems to imply that we do need some consistency in the timeframe of when things are being taught in our classrooms, so that when these children are moving from school to school, they're not caught betwixt and between.
Absolutely. Concur. I concur. And that's for the aligned curriculum is certainly, that's why you would do that, to serve the students. So our assessments that we presently use, and Dr. Stock is going to talk about MAP in more depth in the future, and share with you some of the dashboards and thumb, what are they called, thumb tiles that we use to just have people just take a quick look. But in regard to reading, we do what's called a reading curriculum-based measure, and that's just in kindergarten first and second. We just took the second grade results. And a curriculum-based measure is really a screener, and it's using, it's an assessment where you're actually wanting kids to use the curriculum to assess them. So they're reading a passage, and it's the real curriculum. So what you're trying to find out if they know, you're using the tools to see if they know it. So it's a, they read for a minute, they have three different passages, and then you calculate a number. And the idea is, behind the screener, is that fluency correlates with being able to read. And if you think about just in simplest terms, if you had to sound out "cat" like, "t, t, t, cat." Okay, "cat." And that's a word that I heard before. It is about the student's vocabulary, and then they're able to sound it out, but a lot of cognitive ability went into that, and a lot of time went into me sounding and figuring it out. And if I just had the word "cat," probably the higher level of reading is there. So that's why proficiencies are used. It's only a screener, though, it does not tell you comprehension at all. It does not tell you if they know the vocabulary.
Ms. Hildy.
Is that proficiency, is that what's on the data dashboard?
Correct, for AIMS Web, in the color-coded.
Right. Do we ever get to see the growth measure of, you know, the student A did this in the spring and this in the fall, or, you know, what, how, the percentage of growth we're seeing?
So we do have that on the dashboard where it's in color, where it's those things. It shows the school's progress at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. Correct. But just so you know, the target keeps moving up.
Right.
So the expectation at the beginning of the year is lower than the expectation at the end of the year. Yeah.
But AIMS Web doesn't measure growth, right? It's just MAPS that measures growth.
Well, it would measure growth in the number of words that you read. You could demonstrate growth in an ability there. Yeah. So, because we're doing it three times a year, it's not just once. But what it doesn't do is comprehension and that thing. So at the end of second grade, 59.86 percent of our kids have fluency. Six out of 10 kids have the fluency that are marked, and this is with 30 million students normed. This is a test that's normed across the country in that fluency. But again, all it is is a screener. When a child isn't performing, you have to look further. It's just kind of a temperature gauge, taking your blood pressure. Very quickly can be done in any doctor's office, and if it's different than the norm expected, they look further. That's exactly what this is. It just keeps us on a path of seeing how we're doing. Now, again, measures of academic progress is up to three times a year, and we do that presently in grades three through nine. And on that, the board president mentioned growth. Can we see growth? There is a growth target, and they're, they use a RIT score, and a RIT is just a ROSH unit of measurement, so it's not by grade level. So for instance, probably, Mark, if you can help me, maybe second grade, you're supposed to grow 12 RIT points, but by middle school, a year's growth is four RIT. So the closer you are to the target, the smaller you're moving. And a second grader could have the same RIT score as an eighth grader. So it's really seeing, did a child grow from year to year? And they would have to have access to new curriculum to grow. And of the students in third grade in our district, a little over a third meet the growth that they need to meet in third grade, according to the normed growth. So one-third of our students meet that growth rate.
And do we have the, for 2017?
We do. We can show that. Yeah, we have all of these on the dashboard.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
So this may be a question that can't be answered quickly, but how do you, so if 60 percent roughly of our second graders are proficient, but the growth is only 36 percent in third grade, is there a relationship between those two numbers or not really? Are they pretty independent of each other?
They're two different assessments. One is not proficient. Basically, you are fluent in your reading, and one is actually more proficiency on content and understanding. So there is a small relationship there, but the assessments for AIMS Web and generally the differences of a child under eight, it's very controversial in psychometrics. And that's why students who receive special education services are developmentally delayed till they're seven or eight. They don't, you don't label them. Students for gifted, they're on a path, but they don't officially assess before a certain age because of young children. So we do have, there is a measures of academic progress for younger kids. You know, they, you know, it's just, in the psychometric world, it's, what do we know? And so this is not really, it would be proficient in fluency. So fluency, phonemic awareness in phonics, the early skills, six out of 10 are fluent in it. The later skills of actually reading content and understanding, one-third meet that growth. So they're measuring two different things, so it's hard to, but to your point, we do try to triangulate data. We want to look at all different data sets to see, because we don't ever want to make a judgment on a child or a school or a program. We just look at many different angles to see where can improvement be made. Great question.
Mr. Donlin.
Oh, sorry.
So just on the face of it, these numbers seem really concerning.
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand just how significantly bad they are.
Well, I see a tremendous opportunity for growth. They're going to be tremendously, we have an opportunity to do something. So again, though, these are under new standards. MAP is now aligned to the Common Core. So the idea that if we continued, if we didn't change our classrooms in 2012, '13 when new standards came, we continued to, continue to teach kids, kids, our classrooms are vibrant and enjoyable and active, but the point of learning is that you have to learn that next level and what takes you to the next level. And the expectation, and I think Mark said it once, that really, our parents have the right, and our kids have the right to learn what they're supposed to learn when they go to school, because that's what they're assessed on later on. Like what they are going to be literally assessed on, whether it's in the ACT, SAT, or localized standards. Really, it's a right of, did I have access to that to learn that information? And that's really the key here, is that we want to piece together our outcomes on the standards, what the new learning is.
Ms. Mitchell.
And to your point, Dave, you know, I mean, certainly, we want to take a look at our district and make as much of improvement as we can, but it would be interesting to look at other districts that are our size with our demographics and see if we're significantly below them, or, because we have students that have a lot of challenges and they require a lot of support, so...
Mr. Donlin.
I guess that's exactly what I was getting at, trying to put these numbers, which look very concerning, into some sort of context vis-à-vis other districts with similar challenges, and even though we, no matter what the challenge is, we want our kids to be successful. So I guess that's why I was kind of saying, could we do exactly that, put them into some sort of perspective?
So if I could, one thing about typical growth to try to explain, you know, for a district to close an achievement gap, and that is our challenge, we have gaps, and to close achievement gaps with individual students, we have to exceed the growth that's typical for that child in order to do that. So one of the things about this measure of 36 percent of the third graders, that is not typical growth for a third grader. It's typical growth for where that student started the year at. So if I came into third grade and I'm at the first grade level, and typical growth for me is six scale score points, and I grow three, I did not meet or exceed typical growth for that child who started at first grade. It's nowhere near a third grade measure. It's worse than that, if you will, because you've got to close beyond that. Now, but now, having said that, the thing about typical growth, if I came in and I'm reading three grade levels above, and we certainly have many kids that come in well above their grade level, if I'm a fifth grader, I'm going to be compared for typical growth to other, other third graders scoring at the fifth grade level. So I'm compared to my peer group nationally. And if I, if that's, you know, four great RIT score points for, for a child scoring there, and I only got two, I did not meet or exceed typical growth for a bright student. So it's growth by child. This measure is different than proficiency, which is looking at a third grade standard only. This is just comparing apples to apples for all kids. Where do they start, and can they meet or exceed growth for kids just like them across the country?
And we have a, the guarantee we talk about is that if you spend a year in school, you'll grow a year or more than a year. So it really depends. And I know that we have, short on time, so...
I know. So, yeah. Mark, Mark, I just totally forgot your last name, so Mark, go ahead.
All right.
Mark and Remark.
I think Foster and Stock might be more useful for this conversation in reverse order. My question goes to the norming of the populations that you're measuring growth on. In the normalization process, what factors do you take into account to norm?
We can look through MAP, the measures of academic progress. Traditionally, in a standardized test like Terranova, they actually do a norming group. MAP doesn't do that. MAP takes all the kids and just norms them, and then, and because kids are actually getting smarter, you have seen the norm and the RIT scores and the normative growth actually increase year to year from the time MAP was out in the early 2000s. So interestingly enough, it's normed very differently. It's actually a true mean of millions of children, whereas Terranova's cats that we used to take might have been normed off at 1,800 kids. Yeah, so very different.
And so if I can follow up on, I think, the conversation thread, I think the challenge when you're trying to find comparative districts or schools or groups of students is what factors you might take into account for the headwinds. For example, economically disadvantaged, mobility, English language learners. To the extent you're not adjusting for those headwinds, and you're looking at a big pool, then you want to know where you're at relative to that pool. So I would just want to encourage collective transparency with respect to whether we're taking into account what I'll call big three headwind factors, or however many you want to come up with, when we're doing the analysis. And then the follow-up goes to, how are we managing? How do we identify the outliers? What do we take into account as headwinds? Because if we're just publishing raw scores, as you know, we're missing the headwinds or tailwinds to take into account the value-add models. I just want to encourage progress in that direction, so we have a better feel for how well we're doing relative to those factors. Thank you.
So not that I want to keep school board members from asking questions, but if we could let Dr. Bishop and Mr. Stock go through the presentation and then answer questions at the end.
Sure, we'll go through. So a new state assessment that we have just taken for two years now is PEAKs, and we have the school reporting that, at the end of this presentation, I'll share that, which, so we can take a look at each school's score. So PEAKs, each student is given an individualized score, but then the state accountability system looks at those students' scores in, in a school, in districts. So at the end of the year, PEAKs is given, grades three through nine in our state, and our results in 2018 were published. Forty, these were published earlier this year, we had discussed them. About 46 percent of students in all of those grade levels collectively were proficient or advanced in language. In ASD, one of the things that PEAKs has done in their system of school success reporting is they've taken out third grade English Language Arts, and they've, they multiply that, I guess, indicator as a separate indicator. So they take all of English Language Arts, and then they also pull out just third grade to report in the state reporting. So if you take a look at our schools, in the, the district range is from 6 percent of third graders being proficient to 80 percent. And I want to share that although Destination 2020 really speaks to 90, 90, 90, the industry standard is that you basically shoot for 80 percent of the population generally should be on grade level in a core classroom. So our schools have a wide range of outcomes, and speaking to, they also have a wide range of inputs. So this is our, our different schools, 69 different schools that actually serve third grade.
And I was just curious, on any of the testing where we're looking at results, do we...
Is your mic on? I'm sorry.
I thought it was. Yeah. I'm just not very close to it. When we look at scores, do we eliminate outliers? And it just kind of comes to mind, the classic case of a kid that really doesn't care, marks all the As, or makes a pattern on the bubble sheet, or something like that. Do we discount outcomes like that? Or is that part of...
The state does, yeah. The state takes them, those that they cannot score. So if they just bubbled and it totally wasn't scored, they'll take those out, but I don't know to what percentage of accuracy that's done.
And they do provide also time scores that tells the teacher how long it took the student to do that. So if it says two minutes, and someone else took, you know, 80 minutes, I think there's a, so it gives multiple pieces of information, how much time it took them, plus their score.
Well, possibly. We'll have to dig deeper to find out, but they do invalidate many tests. They invalidate tests. And we've had tests in our district invalidated because of those variables. However, these are true of the students' tests that they scored. This is the outcome. And we had shared NAEP prior to this time as well, the National Assessment of Education Progress, which is given every other year, it'll be provided again this year in our schools. The mean of the nation is 221, however, Alaska's at 207, and as a member Holloman mentioned, there's a group of people scoring around 207, and there's about 10 other states that are collectively around us. We are at the bottom for reading in fourth grade, but it's not a significant difference between others, so... That's the difference between the state mean and Alaska on NAEP. If you could go back.
Can you, yeah, and just explain that chart a little better.
The bottom is the years.
The bottom is the years of the assessment year, and there's a gap in there just to demonstrate, you know, overtime. And there's a gap in there just to demonstrate, you know, overtime.
The nation.
Yes, the nation. Yeah, that's Alaska, fourth grade. Alaska's a state, not Anchorage. This is a state, a national assessment on Alaska's fourth grade scores.
Although seventy of our schools participated in it at some level. So it might only be one grade here, one grade over here, because the state tries to use representative samples so that it can do a comparison across the country, because they scientifically try to compare somewhat apples to apples. So that's why we have so many schools taking it, even though the whole school doesn't take it, just a sample, because they're trying to create a sample that they can use for comparisons nationwide.
Fourth grade classrooms, yeah.
Yeah.
Our learning is in tiered instruction.
Yes.
And actually, we don't assess. Assessors come in, they're hired, and they come in and come into our classrooms.
And if you take federal funds, you say yes.
So the learning plan that we have outlined is tiered instruction. We've heard that before. Tier one, of course, is classroom and core instruction. Tier two is classroom core instruction plus more time and/or intensity. Again, the strip across the top is to demonstrate that eighty percent of classroom instruction be high-quality core instruction that students have access to. Many times when you hear tier three, that would be the replacement curriculum, where someone is generally two or more grade levels behind, and we actually use a more direct, explicit curriculum. So in these different areas, when we see how kids respond, the curriculum may vary as well as the instructional methodologies. So if you think about response to intervention or response to instruction, we look at how do students respond to how we teach, and then we adjust teaching for students, not adjust students for our teaching.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
And how do, is it the AIMS Web and the MAP assessments that decide what tier they're in?
Correct. And it's a moving target. We'll have additional assessments if a student initially tested in, say, a tier two and then they were given some additional instruction and they progress monitor them two weeks later to say, oh, maybe that was a mistake, they'll move into another. So they're fluid groups, is the goal. Great question. We wanted to just pull out, just to look locally, what do we do in Anchorage with measures of academic progress? And just to, we talk about the classroom a lot, and a member Donnelly mentioned classrooms and teachers. And we just took a fourth grade class and an eighth grade class at random. And we had shown this before, but how the different Lexile scores and RIT scores can determine different tiered instruction about what a student may or may not need. And BR is Beginning Reader. So if you look in fourth grade, the range is pretty great. And like a RIT score of two fourteen, two twenty-four, those are middle school scores. So a fourth grade teacher perhaps has a range of, you know, five years below her and/or him and five years above. So our classrooms are varied. And so not only are there those non-cognitive variables that we talked about, there's also cognitive variables in every one of our classrooms. And additionally, similar to the mobility, the vast differences in academic achievement, really to wrap around a support system for that, because it is difficult to do that alone, given that range. When we look at our eighth grade, this is kind of typical. We, the red lines were a little bit, the tier three was smaller. And what we have generally happening is that tier three grows in ASD, meaning that students become, the gap gets wider, the equity gap gets wider and wider. And it is difficult to intervene on a tier three with an older child, because at the beginning of learning, it's really very learning to read. And at the end, it's a lot of content, too. They don't have access to content and learning. So this is the end of an eighth grade class, and we just have to ask ourselves, have we prepared these students for success at high school? And some of them continue to really struggle with those academic fundamentals. And it was just a different way to share it. We wanted to discuss, too, a lot of the dialogue has been around our classrooms and what happens in our classrooms. So we looked at the peak a different way. If we look at our classrooms, and Destination 2020 is ninety percent, but like I said, the industry standard is eighty percent. If we look, how many of our classrooms in grades three through five are meeting an eighty percent proficiency? We have some gains to do as well. So we're looking at this in all different ways. This, where are, where we sit, we don't want to live. We already know that. We don't, we're not happy, or I say, our funders are not happy with where kids are. We want to improve their learning. And the assessments really just give us a picture of a triangulation. One test score, one is not going to determine. Basically, we're just getting an idea of where, where is it? And the goal would be improve student learning. When we can improve instruction and learning, teaching and learning, then these take care of themselves. The way that we measure ourselves would take care, tests take care of themselves. So we don't teach to a test. We don't teach to a PEAKS, we don't teach to a MAP, we don't teach to a curriculum-based measure. Those are just tools we use to see where our children are. If you look at AIMS Web with just first and second grade, which is this reading CBM, our CBM, out of four hundred forty-nine classrooms, and these can be found on our data dashboard. This is a, that access to information is yours as well. We just pulled some different pictures out. We have seventeen classrooms that have eighty percent of students.
Percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Seventeen percent, yeah.
Seventeen percent, rather, that are eighty percent proficiency. This is just another piece to it, that's just the scheduling. The idea about learning is you make time for it. And time is, oh, did you need to plug that in? Sorry. And the win time is really that time to catch up, get re-taught, or to accelerate. Because again, to learn a year for a year, you need to accelerate kids or enrich as well. They have to have access to things that they don't already know, and that's what MAP tells them, things that they don't already know. The plan is the what and the research-based English Language Arts curriculum. Research-based curriculum has five different components. They're there. There was testimony in regard to, well, we really didn't get to choose whatever we wanted. That is true. We only selected from a group of already vetted curriculum by research analysts on curriculum, experts from colleges, universities, to see which ones are aligned with the standards. And so the team that we had come together, sixty-eight educators, it was a limited group. And that was mentioned in testimony, and that's true. It wasn't just what do we want to do? Again, it is all linked back to what students are expected to know, which are placed in the standards. The literacy plan is the how, is related to the must-do or the non-negotiables. And those must-dos are related, again, back to the standards. And they are not, it's not a dialogue or a script. Priority plans are instructions for teachers. It's an overlay on top of the curriculum. Again, curriculum is big money, and everybody knows that. Any curriculum, a publishing company, it's big money, big money, because it comes from the federal government. So when publishers create curriculum, they make something that everybody can like and everybody does like. And so they, on a typical day, they took first grade, and it would take, I think, three hours and fifty minutes to teach everything that was in the third grade for that one day, literally one day. So what the priority plans do is say eighty percent of a guaranteed and viable curriculum, four out of five days, these are the things that are in the standards that students really need to know. And so the priority plans, that's what those are when we talk about those. Those are the non-negotiables according to the standards. And they account for four out of five days of instruction. It's explicit and systematic instruction. You go from easiest to hardest, things like that. So it's... Implementation and practice, really, our goal now is to build competency in evidence-based reading instruction. And we've done that through what Hattie has shared. And those of you that went to Doug Fisher's talk at the beginning of the year, they were just high-quality pedagogy. What happens in classrooms that makes the most difference? And one of those is instructional coaches. A lot of them is also the kind of feedback we give kids. So he had that barometer or odometer that demonstrated what works. And so a lot of our work is around what, where do we put our money where our mouth is? What are we going to invest in? And learning at a particular day and then transitioning that one day a year and expecting to learn all year, that is not high quality. I mean, that's not the recommended. That's a lot of times what our school calendar year is set up like. But what the best model is, is onsite, embedded, which is what coaching is, onsite and embedded. We've worked with a consultant, and this is primarily in those six buildings where we're teaching instructional leaders what good reading instruction looks like. And sixteen schools volunteered to have their teachers observed. We had teams of principals. They went in, they looked at instruction, they went and talked about it. What did you see? What should you have seen? What did you like? How would you give feedback? What, you know, just to say, we're all trying to identify good practices. So we had that at sixteen different schools this year. Schools could volunteer to do that. And then principals from the other schools would come and learn. And then, of course, training is building capacity in instructional leaders and coaches, as well as site-based professional development, like what's happening next to, next Monday on the En service Day. To understand the progress, we use universal screening, program-embedded assessments, and progress monitoring. And program-embedded assessments are what were probably observation, checklist, pop quizzes, things that we are probably familiar with. Those always happen, that what the teacher knows to understand student learning is effective in the classroom. Of course, challenges that we face are the district-wide instructional framework. We haven't had that specificity in our system. We, what works, there's actually a what works clearinghouse by the federal government that Murkowski's aide always sends out information about that, that we have access to research into practice. We talk about the difficulty of change. I don't want to understate that the new learning in the new research of reading is different. If you didn't learn that way, it's different. I mean, to learn seventy-two sounds when we started with an alphabet of twenty-six. You're learning seventy-two sounds, though, from that alphabet. So district accountability of student learning is high. It's written in the Destination 2020. It's written in my evaluation. In fact, the words in my evaluation this year were, this, these scores are unacceptable, was a statement that this board made to me. So the fact that we are working on this isn't taken lightly. State support, the increased rigor of the state standards, along with the Alaska Challenge speaks to third grade reading. They did expand preschool expansion. I want you to know that our grant writer and Chelsea put a program together that we did receive one point six million dollars of those funds. There is research-based curriculum. There's a Senate bill. There's, they started a task force. And then again, in the PEAKS accountability system is really, speaks to the reading over and over again. And I'll show you how on that. So it's surrounding us. And then, of course, nationally, we probably don't have to guess how important folks are saying that is. So now, here's the fun part, understanding the PEAKS designation report. So in front of you, we're going to pass out some information. And, oh, you already have it. So you have two reports as well as Alaska's. So we're going to use those in a minute. This PEAKS designation report replaces the NCLB, AYP, and the ESSA ASPY. So it's the new thing. We talked about the standards and assessment. Now they're going to talk about accountability and system support, like what happens. And moving right along, we have a couple of actual ASD designation reports in front of you. One is from Abbott Loop Elementary School, and one is from West High School. And then you have a report that has red dots on it. And today, we will have a notebook of kind of a reminder of how to read it and more in depth, but I'm going to do the quick version, okay? So if you take a look, if you look at your reports just automatically, you'll know that there's a lot of NAs on Abbott Loops and a lot of, on the right column, and a lot of not applicables on West High Schools for, because one is elementary side and one is secondary. Okay, that's the general gist of it. This item is explained in a pamphlet that I'm going to send with you today. But we're going to go over these report samples. Very simple. Number one, just gives you information on the enrollment and the school ID, just general information about a school. And the school demographics is number two. Very simple, straightforward, how many kids and what kind of school it is. Is it a title school? What are the grade spans? Very simple. The overall school index value is what the school designations is based on, one of the indicators for which the school designation is based on. And that's how we're going to go through and find out, how did they get the overall school index level? The index level determines the support level. The index level, as you know, just so you do know, it goes from zero to a hundred. It's on a hundred-point scale. So that's pretty simple. They made it quite simple, zero to a hundred is pretty good. And the overall index, you need at least two indicators. If you only took math and you didn't have any growth or you didn't have any other, you need at least two indicators to have a scale score and a score. So the support levels are in three different categories. They made it very simple. Threes, universal, all schools are put into this universal support because we support all schools. The next level up, needing additional support, kind of a tiered system. Tier two is targeted support or TSI. And that would mean any student group performing below the TSI performance threshold. So they're going to look at an overall school score. But remember, NCLB was literally named, No Child Left Behind. So they still find subgroups and determine, what does your overall look like as compared to these student subgroups? And so you still have to look at student subgroups. And then the comprehensive support, the school indicator, really, in the state of Alaska, you will automatically be comprehensive if you are in the lowest five percent of title schools, if your graduation rate is not at least two-thirds of your school. And that's, all of our schools that are in comprehensive are in comprehensive because of that, the one thing, graduation rate. And they did have a discussion about this, it's like, because a lot of our schools, or they might be last-chance schools or alternative schools where they went somewhere else and they've only had the child for a year, but it counts against them. It is true that graduation rate counts at the last school for which the last semester that student was in, but that is nationally. So the state did try to push back on that. The TSI student group could be low, and that's why you could have comprehensive. And then if you have the same student group over time, you could be comprehensive. So very simple, three different levels. The majority of our schools, almost all of them are universal. We have four targeted and about eight or nine comprehensive. All of them that are comprehensive are strictly due to graduation rate. All of them that are targeted are strictly due to a student group being lower than the TSI number. And I'll share what that number is. So they do look at participation rate. And if you see the letters FAY, that means full academic school year. So up at the top, on the left-hand side, if you're looking at Abbott Loop, on the right-hand side, if you're looking at West High School. So you'll see, how many full academic year students are there? To be full academic year, it's October first to the first day of testing. So if kids came in October second, they don't, they're not in our full academic year students. They wouldn't count for, nor would they count against your school score. Students would get their results back. It's just it wouldn't be counted for this school success report, okay? It wouldn't be counted at the school level. So for English Arts and Math, you have full academic year students. And then how many were tested, it gives you your rate. Now, that's pretty simple. Now we'll go into the K6 indicator. So you would want to look on the Abbott Loop. And we're going to talk about number five, red number five. And it talks about all the different indicators on the left-hand side. The indicators that make up the school index are academic achievement, academic growth, English language learners, and school quality and success. Under the school quality and success are absenteeism and grade-three language arts. So they pulled out grade-three language arts a second time. So of the eight total possible areas for which you could get points, three of them are in reading. So we can take a look. You're looking at the value and then the weight. The weight of is delivered, it's, the total is going to be a hundred. If, for instance, a school does not have enough students to count, because you need at least ten students in an area, they would just redistribute that weight to make it in other areas. But you're going to have your indicator, your... But you're going to have your indicator, your percent proficient, they're going to weight it, you're going to get a value, and then you're going to get points for that value. So it's basically a simple algorithm that provides points for schools. There is an 80/20 rule. If you see a zero when you see that, here's an example. If you look at the number of proficient at the very bottom for English, Grade 3 English Language Arts, and you look at the number proficient, that's 14.89 for Abbott Loop. Their school index is 51, but their third grade reading is 14. Because they fell under 20, they get zero for that. And they do that for small school suppression, but to keep it even, if you're above 80, you're going to get an automatic 100, and if you're below 20, you're going to get an automatic zero. And everybody in between gets the exact same score that they actually scored. It's just a little nuance in it, and it explains it more in the packet, but you're going to get points, and the points add up for your index score. So your index score is your math proficiency, language arts proficiency, your math growth, your language arts growth, so they do look at that. Chronic absenteeism, you look at, if you look on Abbott Loop, it says 81.73. Those are the students who are not chronically absent. So even though it says chronically absent, you get points for every student who is not chronically absent. And then, again, you'll get a score on the thing. If you look at Anchorage, West High School, the difference there, you know, it's their English Language Arts, but for their school quality, they have chronic absenteeism and four and five-year graduation rates. So that is their other indicator. One of the big sellers on ESSA was that we could choose some indicator. A lot of ideas came through to the state. They didn't make the end because the state doesn't take collective information on it to guarantee it. So some of the ideas that came up were, how about we use the number of students in career and technical courses? Because we know that that is related to graduation. The state doesn't collect universally information on that from every district, so they couldn't use it. Doesn't mean they can't in the future, but for this accountability, they couldn't use it at the time. So that's how they're finding out. They take, you know, the indicators, they look at the weight of the indicators, they're given a value, then they're times by that weight, which creates their points, which is just the percentage of that. At the bottom of the page, if you look at the school index value calculations, that, if it's a, say, Polaris, would have both of those filled in, grades K through 6 and 7 through 12. Every middle school has both sides because the sixth grade, well, not every middle school, but middle schools that have sixth grade have both sides of this form filled in because they have sixth graders and some of the eighth graders, some of them. The idea, the next one is the second indicator, which is the student group performance. We had schools with high index scores that were targeted schools, and the reason being is because one of their student groups in this category fell below. If you look at the very bottom of that chart, it says TSI Performance Threshold, 15.91. That is this year's, or last testing year's targeted, and so it's going to be a moving target. So how they found that number is if this is all, this model represents all of the title schools in the state of Alaska. They took the bottom 5% of all the title schools in the state of Alaska, and in the bottom 5%, the top school in the bottom 5%, whatever their index score was, was the index score you had to beat in your student groups. That's what that 15.91 is. So that's a moving target. Every year, that will be redetermined. The idea is that it would grow, that the next year, the low would be 15. So if a school in one of those student categories did not get at least 15.91%, they did, they were a TSI school, they were a targeted school. And we had some schools that had an index of 54, but they're a targeted school because one of their student groups tested below that 15.91. And they're, I believe, one, three neighborhood schools and one charter, I think, that happened to. We're going to give you those. And here's just a, just a quick statement, how important the Destination 2020 is grounded in an accountability system, not only at the state level, but as well as in our local district. Key indicators of district-wide success, and that's something that Member Mitchell brought up. There are districts that have done at the, in the Urban League, if you will, that have made a difference, and some of these indicators, they had these in common. They did a study that we went to at the Council of Great City Schools at their academic planning. So with that, these are going to be online. It's every single school in our district and what the schools' scores are. They are here in print form, if you wanted one and you don't like to use, you know, look at them on computer. There's also a list that we provided of third grade scores, if you had an interest in between the 6% and the 80%, and all the schools in between. And that is not an index score, that is just third grade reading. Okay? It says over there on the right, that's what that is. And if it has a carrot, it, they only put below a certain number because of identification of students. And this is a great resource, the second one, that says student success. That really goes into much more detail about what do they do if it falls below 10, how do we count it? It's really the metrics in detail sent home for you if you really are interested. If you want to take home, and we can make more copies of these, these are all of our schools in the district with their scores. So that is accountability. Assessment requests just for reading, and we will follow up with math, as well as graduation rate, as well as connecting this survey, our climate survey in subsequent meetings. But we wanted to be sure, grounded it and couch it in an understanding of the why. Madam President, that's it.
And that's a lot. Really doesn't give us a lot of time for questions because we have to move into the CIP. But what I'd like to do is, I think we need to continue this. So if board members give a chance to kind of absorb this information, and possibly at our next work session, we could dedicate about 30 minutes to questions and different things like that, but it gives us time to take a look at all this material. Would that be agreeable with all board members?
Madam President, we could also, if there are any questions, we can answer. We took a couple today that we will answer in regard to the Approach Map uses to collect some data, you know, how is it cleaned, if you will? And we can provide those written as well. So any question, we will share. And we can spend a whole day just on map and how we're using it, and that's one of the future ones.
Right. Well, then, I think what we'll do is extend this to next work session, and that will be our opportunity to discuss this as a board and presenting questions we may have. If you have questions early that they can answer, that would be helpful so that we can have the discussion at next work session. Everybody in agreement? Okay.
It's a lot to absorb, yes.
Yeah, it is.
And with that, we'll move right into the next item. Madam President, the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, CIP update.
That sounds good. Thank you.
And Tom Roth and his team will present that, and I'll move over to the side.
Madam President, Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to really have a continuation of the, here we go, the Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan that was presented to the Board on the 22nd of October during the work session. And that was inclusive of both the Six-Year Plan and the proposed 2019 bond proposition, which is also year one of the Six-Year Capital Plan. So for the agenda, it's going to be kind of quick based on time. Before I get started, you should have two products in front of you, both 11 by 17 sheets. Can we make sure we get those handed out, please?
Yeah, here we are. Yeah. We have those, and those will be in conjunction with other questions that were presented, so we have them all answered.
The first is the Table 1 that was presented to the Board by the administration two weeks ago. The second is a modified Table 1 based on some proposed modifications by Board Member Donnelly.
One moment, Mr. Roth. It's in the back of this packet. If you want to take the, there's a colored blue one, so it's not this one, it's the one right behind it, if you want to take a look.
So one should look, this is the administration's proposed, it's got some coloring towards the top of the chart. And then the modified table looks like this. So I will be referencing both of those charts during the brief. So what I propose to do is to do a very quick, brief review of what the administration presented, and then transition to the alternative Six-Year Plan based on recommendations from Member Donnelly. We also have two guests here. We have the, from the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, we do have the President or the Chairman of the Advisory Committee, Mr. John Bolkow, who will provide a CIAC assessment of the administration's proposed plan. We also have Mr. Bob Griffin, who is a member of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee here to make a statement to the Board. So the Six-Year CIP and the 2019 bond proposal, again, they remain as non-action items in front of the Board this evening, and we'll come back to the Board on the 19th as action items. So if you would, please, I'll just call your attention to this product, Six-Year Plan. You'll see it's got the blue and the green coloring. So just to very quickly summarize, the administration's recommendation for years 1 and 2, 2019 and 2020 respectively, what the administration is proposing are predominantly deferred maintenance bonds, with one exception in that we are proposing for planning and design monies to replace both Abbott Loop and Inlet View Elementary School. The amounts that we're recommending in these months are either at or below debt retirement. At year 3, based on our understanding of the sunset of Senate Bill 64, where the state could reinstate debt reimbursement up to 50%, that we would see a bit of a strategic transition from just doing deferred maintenance to actually doing some more major renovations, and in the examples noted, replacing schools. We are also proposing in year 3, in year 5, multi-year bonds, two-year bonds, which are clearly higher in amount in the total sense, but the amounts over a two-year period are generally commensurate to what we're requesting in the previous years, a bit higher than those. But if, again, if it's a deferred or a reimbursed portion of the debt, then the actual impact on the bond debt of the district is also commensurately reduced. I'll pause if anybody has any questions on this. So what I'd like to do, if no questions, is transition to this next product, Six-Year Plan. Again, this is based on some recommendations from Board Member Donnelly that were provided to the district. And if I might just, just to highlight a couple of portions of this, and then I'll pass off to Mr. Donnelly if he wanted to add additional comments. So in short, what this alternative Six-Year Plan entails is, really, it's an acceleration of the deferred maintenance in years 1, years 2, and years 3 forward in the planning cycle. It would move the planning and design projects for both Abbott Loop Elementary School and Inlet View Elementary School from year 1 to year 3. Now, to very briefly talk to year 1, year 2, and year 3. So in 2019, there are four projects that are being added from year 2, specifically Chinook Elementary School, which is a roof replacement and restoration, Campbell Elementary School, a partial roof replacement, a boiler replacement at Birchwood, and then a roof restoration and our maintenance facility. Those, again, coming from year 2. Yes, ma'am?
Under that year 1 bond, you know, we've mentioned before whether we have the resources in the community to meet this, these construction projects. Is there enough workers or enough companies that would be able to bid on?
That is a concern, that we, that the contract, the contractor pool may not be adequate to meet this. So what it would mean is that these projects, instead of addressing them within a one- to two-year period, would probably be addressed over a longer duration of time, potentially three to four years, would be our initial assessment of that. So in years 2, what we see is an acceleration of three projects, Chugak Elementary School Roof Replacement, Kasoon, which is a partial replacement, and then Lakewood, which is also a partial roof replacement, moving from year 3 to year 2. And then in year 3, we see a movement of Bartlett High School Roof from year 5 forward to year 3. Mr. Donnelly, at this time, I'd like to hand over to you to make any comments.
Thanks, Tom. Just initially, on Friday, we had talked about some more fine-tuning to this. Has that all been incorporated?
It has been integrated into.
So I'd just like to point out that this is an ongoing project, and I very much appreciate the administrative staff of the department assisting with this. As you can see, it's in a format that's much easier to deal with than the amendments I made at the last CIP, which was all in just English written out in this form. So by them allowing, doing this for us, it really helps understand. And in that, there's still a few revisions I would probably be working on in the time before it comes to us, in that my goal here is to try to do annual catch-up on our deferred maintenance until we get to the point where we know whether or not the legislature and the state are going to actually continue or reinstate the school debt bond reimbursement program. And at that point, if we know that they are, then to consider moving ahead with the Abbott Loop and the Inlet View designs. My fear is, by doing the designs in this coming year and not knowing whether there's going to be a reimbursement available in 2021, we risk, you know, the problem of having something designed and then not having reimbursement available to the taxpayers, and all the complications that are going to result in that. So the goal was to have a annual program that's about what, or a little bit less than, debt reimbursement is for each of those years, until we get to the outer years where we know whether or not the school debt reimbursement program is going to be reinstated, and then to start working towards those more extensive school renovations and new school constructions.
Ms., I saw Ms. Goldie's hand first, sorry.
Mr. Roth, could you just, I share Mr. Donnelly's concern about building a Six-Year Plan, assuming that debt reimb, the bond debt reimbursement is going to come back. Can you share what our deferred maintenance is right now, and how maybe that's going to grow over the next couple of years, and why it matters? What effect does it have on, you know, what is deferred maintenance, right? Sometimes it just sounds like a buzzword versus you have regular, ongoing maintenance costs. Why does it matter that we address deferred maintenance?
Thank you for the question, and I'll ask Mr. Fennicev to talk to this as well. But in short, I believe we currently stand in terms of deferred maintenance, capital maintenance on our facilities, at about half a billion, about over 500 million. And I think the concern is, you know, it's not that the school buildings at this point are not safe to occupy, it's not that they're not functional, but the systems, systems over It's not that they're not functional, but the systems, systems over time do wear out roofs, boilers, heating ventilation systems, parking lots. I mean, you name it. The more you defer maintenance, capital maintenance, that list becomes much more challenging to reduce it. So you get to a point, if you think about 500 million, that's a daunting number to present to the community and it's increasing at a fairly significant rate. I don't have the chart in front of me, but as the district over time has bonded for an amount below debt retirement, the corresponding curve of increased deferred maintenance has actually gone proportionally in the opposite direction. So I guess the broader concern is when do you get to that point where you just can't recover? Tom, you want to add a comment?
Sure. So you have the facilities condition index. Like, we're looking at the next 10 years out, where it will look. So buildings like Abbott Loop and Inlet View, if you look at these buildings the next 10 years out in terms of needing major component replacement, you also see that exponential rise in requirements. So, for example, Abbott Loop and Inlet View will be approaching almost... The cost to repair the items will be almost the cost to replace the school in the next 10 years.
Ms. Mitchell?
So Dave, I was just curious. You don't have the multi-year bonds in your draft. Is that intentional or is that just the way that Mr. Roth and his group did this?
Yeah. My alternative plan has an annual bond that's of a more traditional amount for... And my thinking along there is it's going to make it much easier to educate and explain to the public on an annual basis. And I clearly recognize there's public policy advantages to multi-year bonds, but at the same time, with the uncertainty of school debt, bond debt reimbursement out there on the horizon, to make a plan for 2021, to have a bond that's twice the traditional amount, frightens me or concerns me from an educational point of view to the voters. And I think a more safe six-year plan would have an annual bond amount that's in the more traditional targeted amount. Additionally, I wanted to say one of the reasons for the plan as I'm suggesting it move towards, and this isn't a final product, we're getting close here and Tom's been wonderful to work with on this, is the plan not to close down any schools, not to merge schools than we're already looking at doing, is based on population increase potential. And the study that was done really anticipates, based on housing permit projections, that we're going to see a very significant increase in our population because right now we have many schools that are under capacity. And while we're so far under capacity in so many schools across the district, to go out to the public and ask that we tear down and build new schools, I think it's going to be a very hard sell. And it's one thing if we have a bond reimbursement program available to the taxpayers. It's another thing if we don't and if the population doesn't turn around in the next two years. If it continues to decline, I'm very concerned about the perception of tearing down schools rather than merging schools to take up this gap and the costs that are associated with building two new schools versus combining some existing schools.
Any other questions? Okay. Do you have more, Tom?
At this time, Madam President, I would recommend, in the interest of time, since we have the guest speakers, that we allow them to come forward and then we'll have an opportunity, if the board wants to revisit these subjects during the regular session where we'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd first like to invite Mr. John Bulco to come forward to present the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee assessment of the administration's six-year plan.
Welcome, John.
And I am John Bulco.
I know that. It's like Greenie, Greenie and a Groony.
So anyways, and so the CIAC met over the summer here. So the CIP has evolved quite a bit since the recommendation that we sent out to you. In fact, the CIAC has not seen Mr. Donley's proposal at all. The... In general, the comments that I've heard from the other board members are generally supportive of the CIP as presented. If you look at the version with the color there, the SD version, you'll notice, right? So if you remember in our recommendations, we were concerned that we weren't addressing enough deferred maintenance in the out years. And because at the version that we were reviewing at that time, that if you look in years three and five, the only deferred maintenance projects were the Chugak and Bartlett High School projects at that time. So this CIP has come a long ways towards addressing the concerns the CIAC had. And then the CIAC also did recognize that whenever we do a complete tear-down and replacement of a school, all that deferred maintenance for those schools goes to zero. And so even the new projects are addressing the deferred maintenance to a degree.
Any questions for John? Mr. Donley?
John, has your committee had much opportunity to compare some of the numbers for our per-square-foot construction versus any comparables out there? And I know that school construction is much more expensive than ordinary school... Ordinary construction because of requirements of the Department of Education and different standards that are involved. But we hear a lot about that dichotomy. And do you have any observations about that?
And there has been some discussion, I believe you're going to be hearing from Bob here certainly, that the... And one of the things that, right? The idea that they're... That somehow it's being inefficient is, I just don't see it. That, you know, the... Bob is saying, well, he got a quote for a roof, right? Well, the projects that are on this thing, yes, they're replacing the roof membrane, but they're also doing work to parapets. They're changing the structure for seismic improvements. They're very different animals. Just because they both have the name roof in the title does not make them the same. And so, yeah, so I don't think we can really look at this in a per-square-foot thing and say, well, this and this, we should be able to compare them. That's... It's almost nonsensical, I'm afraid. And again, you know, the... But I've heard the charter school that was, you know, brought up here, the, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we need in a school for proper, you know, to meet our ed specs.
So people...
Okay, let him finish.
Well, I just want to say, just so people understood what he was referring to, maybe you could just expand on that a little bit so people could understand what you're talking about.
So like on the Winterberry Charter School, the... That I've seen talk about, oh, well, look how it was so relatively inexpensive. But, I don't know, has the board had a chance to go through the facility? You know, so how did you like the student drop-off area, which wasn't there, was it? The multipurpose room, wasn't there? The... Was there a kitchen? Was there a cafeteria to eat? Was a gym? Was there a playground? Right? We don't want just a warehouse to put the kids in. We need an actual, you know, the... And that's what the whole ed spec exercise is about, is what do we need to provide the class, you know, the facilities that we need to give the education that we want the kids to have? And so to compare a facility that doesn't come close to meeting that ed spec with another school, I'm just not seeing it.
Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to share along those lines. I, in my former district, a charter school was trying to build a school off of a bond and it never passed in the community. So we went to a USDA loan to be able to use the funds to build. And just walking through the school during construction would tell you the difference. It was made with wood structure. It was a wood structure school, not steel, as our buildings have to be built. So the actual... I mean, it was made by the same builders that have built schools in Anchorage. And it wasn't that it wasn't presentable and nice at the end. It's just a very significant difference. The school is not... Was not expected to last 50 years. Not sure if it will, but the structural components that were allowed to be built on a USDA bond compared to a deed bond were night and day.
Mr. Donley and then Mr. Holloman.
I really appreciate you being here today. I had a question. Has your committee ever had a chance to review building regulations that may increase or inhibit some of the things we'd like to do with schools that really don't apply well either to our Alaskan environment or to the school process? And I'll give you an example of that. And, you know, you should never just presume that the building code is a fixed thing because as a state senator, I amended the building code to change it to provide more restrooms be mandated for women because I felt the existing building code was deficient in that and there was some very good medical and scientific evidence that there was a justification for additional ratio, increased ratio of restroom facilities for females. And so you can amend building codes state by state. Have you ever examined any specific issues that maybe we, as a district, might want to advocate for changes?
No, we've never been asked to do that.
Okay. I would love it if you ever got around to doing that, taking a look at some of those issues and I'd love to work with you on some ideas that I have. Thank you.
I will put it to the rest of the kayak. I'm not sure how keen they will be to take on more responsibilities, but sure.
And I can tell you, they work very diligently and very hard in the time they have to come up with these recommendations. Mr. Holloman?
I'm just going to speak from the perspective of someone that's gone through earthquake drills inside of one of our newer buildings, Goldenview Middle School. And I've contemplated where a lot of the cost comes from because you can see it, the steel framework around doors. All the doors are thick, they're heavy, the hardware's stainless steel and it's heavy. And there are precious few buildings in the city that are made for the kind of traffic and the kind of use. If you just sit in a school building and watch how many times a door gets opened and closed, how many kids go in and out, it's stunning. And I'm thinking that places like Providence Hospital build for that kind of abuse. They don't have the crowds at any one time, but they're made for kind of constant traffic on a 24/7 basis. And then layer on top of that, the fact that our schools are shelters. They are built to be refuge in a wildfire or in a severe earthquake with a generator that'll run the whole building for days. There are a bunch of things that go in that make them awfully expensive that go beyond education. And I'll say that if people internalize it, they realize it's part of the value we put on our kids. We... I can't recall a student death from a faulty... We don't have stairs that collapse. We don't have roofs that collapse. We don't have kids that get hit from things that are falling off of buildings and whatnot. And it comes at no small price, but you can see it. And I have been through Winterberry and it's very attractive. It's not the same at all. It's not the place you would want to be in an earthquake necessarily, but the level of security we've got is very high. It would be hard to do less. And then the follow-up is, from the design and everything, Goldenview's still one of those brand-new buildings, but it's been open 20 years. And I think that reflects well on the kind of design we're getting and the choice of materials and whatnot. People still walk into it and they come away feeling like, wow, you know, they just built this pretty recently and it's beautiful. And it's only 20 years old.
So in the interest of time, I know we have another speaker, correct? If we could, because we're running short of time. And if that's okay, if... John, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And if we could have the next speaker, please.
Yes, ma'am. Bob, come on up, please.
Hi, Bob.
Yeah, Bob Griffin. I won't dispense with introductions. I think everybody on the board knows me one way pretty well. I'll really summarize pretty quickly what I wanted to talk about today. I think we need to find a way to do our school buildings cheaper and faster. Number one, I'm concerned that our projects still have excessive soft costs and I'm not the only one that believes that the 2014 study from the Council of Great City Schools indicated that our architectural costs were about double the national average. And I... The seven years that I've been on the Capital Improvement Committee, I really haven't seen much movement in that direction, the changes, just the... The fact that we have a $500 million deferred maintenance list, you know, you've got to let that soak in a little bit. It's going to take, you know, $50 million a year in 10 years to erase that on top of the 80 to 100 million dollars a year that it keeps the facilities to, you know, continue to deteriorate over the years. That's my other big concern is we really don't have a strong strategy for dealing with that situation. The strategy seems to be hoping that debt reimbursement will return. And I'm not optimistic that in any scenario beyond or outside of $200 a barrel oil, that the debt reimbursement program is... There's going to be any money available for what was a $300 million a year program in the legislature for those type of things to return. To Member Holloman's point, no, I don't recall anybody ever being killed by a building collapse in Anchorage or anywhere in the private sector in the last 20 years. So that the $3 million campus at Winterberry, which is about half the price of... There's... We have three roof projects that are twice the cost of the Winterberry campus that were that are on the bond proposal, all of them with more than $1 million in project costs each of those roof projects. That Winterberry Charter School did just fine during the last big earthquake that we had coming up. And if it only lasts for 50 years, that's a pretty... It's still a pretty efficient investment. The fact that it's a small campus without a multipurpose room doesn't eliminate the fact that it has more people on the waiting list to join that program than are actually able to house in that program. Yeah, those are the main points that I wanted to bring up. There's a lot of very specifics that I've exchanged in some emails that I don't know if they've gotten to the board, but if not, I'll send some of my comments forward. The fact that just the Abbott Loop Elementary School, if you can combine the planning money, the construction money, and the $3.9 million that was already designated for sprinklers for that school, it comes up to about $51 million or about almost approaching $900 a square foot for a facility. And President Marsa, you know, then in the real estate industry, you can understand that's a pretty steep figure when you consider that my example I use in the private sector was the Natural Pantry was built for $17 million. 45,000 square foot building is about $370, $380 a square foot, including all the Title 21 requirements and including the profits for the developers and the architects and everything that goes along with that building. And if those of you that have been in that building, it's a beautiful structure and probably would make a pretty good shelter during an earthquake as well. So in a nutshell, those are my comments. I know time is dear on these things. I know time is dear on these things, but if you have any specific questions, I'll go ahead and forward my emails on some of the comparisons that have been made. I don't know if you've seen the staff, did a great job of providing me the cost per square foot. I don't know if you guys got a chance to see those. I'll forward those to the cost per square foot of the roofing projects. Again, $120 a square foot was the highest. They range from $96 a square foot to $120 a square foot for roofing projects. I, you know, not completely similar. I had my home re-roofed this year for $7 a square foot. And my commercial building, it was a flat roof building, a little bit more expensive, two beds between $11 and $14 a square foot to have the, with the caveat of if there was any roof rot, it would be additional $4 per square foot to replace the roof rot. So, the orders of magnitude difference between the public sector and the private sector. I've been told many times that the public sector is unable to compete with the private sector in these arenas, but I'm just trying to, in my mind's eye, see how is that a fair burden to the taxpayers? And given our situation with $500 million in backlog, we really do need to find some way to do our projects faster and cheaper than what we're doing right now.
So, does anyone else have a question, or I'm going to ask one? Okay, Mr. Donnelly.
This is to both Mr. Ross and yourself, Bob. How hard would it be to do an analysis that removed the extra expenses that Tom was identifying that go along with some of the roof projects that are just not the roof? I mean, to really get a more apples-to-apples comparison? I'm just asking how difficult that would be to drill down a little more so that we'd see more of a comparison in the actual product.
Just to immediately respond, we've done that, and we've actually sent those products out. We're happy to sit down and talk to those, because it really is apples to oranges in my estimation.
I think that was a question I was going to ask, too, is are we comparing roofs that have already been done and the cost that are associated to the roofs that have been done? Or are we associating to the cost of roofs we're looking to have done?
We can, we looked at both completed roofs as well as roofs that are still in the planning phase. And really, it comes down to, and John bulked out, talked to it, a lot of the conversation, it's the standards, the requirements for government contracting to meet ed specs, state, federal, you know, MUNICO 21 requirements for a school building are completely different than what I believe Mr. Griffin is describing. And Winterbury is a great example. It's a building that we educate kids in. It's what it is. It's not a school building that's compliant with the requirements that we meet for ASD schools.
One, the other thing is, I think sometimes when we open up those roofs, we tend to find a lot of other things that have to be done because of the age of these roofs when we're replacing them. So, I'm just wondering if that's factored into this cost comparison?
It is a part of the cost estimates.
Mr. Foster.
I want to move past, well, I'll call variance analysis between quote A and quote B, and ask, I think, a more interesting governance question for the board and the executive team to think about. We put our projects out to bid. We get prices back. We use that as one way to demonstrate that we're being good stewards, because we're getting competitive bids. The other question that was brought up and addressed in the Council of Great City Schools audit was, how do we benchmark the results of that competitive bid process to determine whether that process is in fact getting us good value? And I think that's an area where I would encourage us to explore. It is not a simple question and answer, however, based on the work of that prior audit. And you can see there's some value in getting a fresh set of eyes from different places, maybe different places in Alaska and different places in other jurisdictions that may face similar challenges with respect to where they're at in the construction market and what, you know, supply and demand is for specialized labor and general labor. So, those kind of factors. But I do think it would be useful for us to present to the public some process where we are in fact trying to benchmark to make sure that it's not only we're getting good value because it's competitively bid, but we're really checking to make sure that the market is delivering the results that we need to get good value. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Griffin? Okay. I think we are going to move to our favorite part of the evening, and that's recognition of staff, students, and community members. And Ms. Mitchell, if I could get you to work with Dr. Bishop?
Do I?
Yeah. Go for it.
Thank you for pressing your questions. I appreciate it. The variance analysis, every now and then I turn off the news. Yeah, and the experience that I have back in my time, I love it. Let's continue our conversation. I should move all my stuff back. All right, Bob.
On this, oh, they are. Are you, are people outside? I'll need to focus. Okay. Nice to see you again. In the front, yeah. I know, really. Don't call us by name again. Okay, we're good. Dr. Bishop, this is Mark Schroeder.
Brian Schroeder, give us a turn.
Wonderful. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Welcome. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we are going to start our focus on staff and students. And for those of you who have not been with us before during this session of our school board meetings, it is a time whereby the board has put aside to celebrate those people, our students, our teachers, our community members, everyone in Anchorage that makes ASD great. So, without further ado, and I'm going to correct the faux pas I made last board meeting. I called police officers firemen and women. That was really bad. And I'm going to start again and make that up, because this is certainly a great award. I'm going to talk about the BJA Stop School Violence Grant. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the awarding of a $223,000 grant under the Bureau of Justice Assistance, STOP, which means School Violence Competitive Grant Program. We want to welcome our guests, the U.S. Attorney, Mr. Brian Schroeder from the United States Attorney's Office, District of Alaska. Please come forward. Everyone else see you. All right. And APD Police Chief and Deputy Chief. So, please come forward, Chief Dahl and Deputy Chief. We draw great comfort knowing that we work and live in a community that is so committed to students' well-being and safety, and that we get to work with dedicated partners with the Attorney's Office and APD. You make a positive difference in our community, and I'm honored to celebrate this grant award with you today. As ASD Superintendent, I believe student safety is the district's number-one priority. And I'm always aware that our parents entrust us with what I call their babies. No matter whether they're high school kids like that, they're still somebody's babies. And that's an awesome and humbling responsibility. When we think about student safety, we often think about secure school buildings and our staff's readiness to respond to bad situations. While those are important, they are just parts of a larger need in our schools. I'm about kids, and I think it's equally, if not more, important that we know our kids intimately and that our principals, teachers, counselors, and partners have the training and the tools to identify our students in need, to intervene on their behalf, and to get them to the professional services and care they deserve. That's how we make our schools safer. And it gets to the core of what we're about, educating and taking care of our kids. That's what this grant is about, to establish the Safe Assessment and Intervention Network, or SAIN, S-A-I-N, to take care of our kids and make schools safer. This is and always will be a team effort, and it's great to have Mr. Schroeder and Chief Dahl here representing their department. I want to thank you and acknowledge everyone who contributed to the planning, preparation, and submission of the grant proposal. It's a wonderful achievement, and will make a big difference for the safety of our kids. And I'm not sure, but I believe only five were awarded nationwide. So, Anchorage, over 200 were submitted, and not very many, but Anchorage was an award winner. So, at this time also, Diane Lemon is going to come forward. And you haven't been here before, I don't think, but these guys have. And so, what we do is we pass the mic. So, whether you're ready to say something or not, we have you say it. Here you go.
I'm a lawyer. I can always talk, so. No, Department of Justice is just, is very pleased to partner with the Anchorage School District to protect the children of our city. I was reading through the program narrative today, and it's really, the SAIN program's very innovative in that it focuses on intervention with kids before they have, hopefully, trouble that my friends in the uniforms here have to deal with or I have to deal with. So, it's a great program, and we're happy to be part of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for inviting us tonight, and I would just echo what the U.S. Attorney said. You know, the Anchorage Police Department has a very long history of having a strong partnership with the school district, and I think this just builds on that. The SAIN program is very much like the Crisis Intervention Team program that the police department has, and that's been wonderfully successful for us. And, you know, we can continue that partnership by offering our expertise and experience in the CIT program as ASD gets the SAIN program off the ground. So, anything that's proactive and helps intervene in a situation before it comes violent is wonderful, and I really applaud your application. Thank you.
And Diane Lemon is our council coordinator, who is the project manager.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick rundown of the grant itself, so you know what that contributes and what's involved in that. And so, the BJA STOP grant, its main overall goal is to reduce security risks and safety threats in our schools. And there's three main initiatives that make this happen. First is, we, as was mentioned by Dr. Bishop, we establish a team at each school to assess threats. Those team members include administrator, a mental health provider, usually an SRL, so we're in conjunction with APD, and other team members that are appropriate for the situation. And that, once the team has been established, they're all going to receive training in various capacities. Part of it is some suicide awareness and prevention training, some nonviolent crisis intervention training, and probably the biggest thing in my book is that they're going to be trained on how to conduct a threat assessment. In our district, we call that a student safety assessment. As was mentioned, this is not something to do at the time. This is something, a prevention effort. So, this is a team will look at things before they happen. If there's a student of concern, let's look at that and see what the problem is and see if we can meet the needs of that student. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is that we will track the number of student safety assessments done per school. And as we do that, and as we look at the needs of our students, we'll collaborate with both in-house with the different disciplines, and of course, with those members of community that will help us to meet the needs of those students.
All right. And I want to thank the grant writers as well as our partners, and thank you for making ASD great. So, let's give them another hand. All right. Keeping kids safe, and we'll take a picture. Our second awardee tonight is Mr. Jim Bell. Come on forward. Congratulations. And Mr. Bell's principal is here to celebrate that Mr. Bell is the Alaska Region Four Assistant Principal of the Year. Principal Frank Hauser said, "From his first day at service, Jim has brought fresh energy to the activities department, has been a positive influence on students and staff. I routinely receive compliments from students, staff, and coaches and parents about Jim's friendly demeanor and his effectiveness in meeting the needs of many sports teams, activities, and clubs." And this weekend, you just got a big win, correct?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, swimming?
Boy.
Boys swimming and diving. It's been 22 years. I think the ladies took the diamond one, so we'll see. Jim takes an active, hands-on approach to the hundreds of events that take place at the school. It is not unusual to find him working an event on his own time to ensure it runs smoothy. He communicates well with parents and works with all staff to improve performance, but perhaps his greatest strength is his commitment to our students. Even in critical situation, he listens and reacts calmly. He weighs all of the outcomes, sees each challenge as an opportunity, and makes good decisions that align with policy. With his wealth of experience, he's a resource not only to staff, but to all other administrators as well. Congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work and dedication. You are what makes ASD great. And now, I would like to announce another team that has made ASD great, the Diamond High Cross Country Running Team. Please come forward. Santiago Proser, or Prosser, Prosser. Nico Latva Kiskola. Fred Rig. George Van Kara. Dallin Gardner. Noah Hofer. Cameron Sheldon. And coaches Nate Normandin, Jeff Keller, Sarah Freestone, and Carrie McNich. Please come forward as well. And let me tell you about this team. The Diamond High Boys Cross Country Running Team is the 2018 Division One Alaska State Champions. Woo-hoo! Ladies and gentlemen, it has been 21 years since Diamond won a last country-state title. These state champions, the state championship was an exciting race to watch unfold as the Diamond boys started out in third place. Throughout the last three kilometers, they moved through the pack of runners. When they crossed the finish line, Diamond had placed five runners in the top, 13 and seven in the top 30. It is a team event. Santiago Prosser, I get it? All right. Was the boys' top racer throughout the season, placing first or second most of the season. Santiago's got it going on. Nico Latva Kiskola, six, Kiskola, La Kiskovola, was also consistently one of the top 10 racers in the entire state. Clutch performances at the state meet were run by Fred Rig, George Van Kara, and Dallin Gardner, 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 with an I, which ensured the boys the state title. These three ran their fastest 5K times ever at the state meet. Congratulations, John, on your accomplishments in bringing the cross-country running state title back to Diamond High School. Your dedication and hard work paid off. You are who make ASD great. And I do pass the mic, gentlemen, so tell us a little bit about the team.
I don't know. It's, I don't know. Okay, well, first off, I just want to thank all my boys up here, you know, who worked very hard, who put in all the effort. And it definitely showed, definitely showed in our final performance there. Throughout the season, there was this other team, Chugiak High School, actually, that they were beating us most of the races. And we kind of just kept our heads cool. You know, they'd be trash talking us, but we let our performance at the end show, so.
You won when it mattered.
Exactly.
Just like to thank our coaches, and we're going to miss these four seniors.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank all the coaches. They've been there since day one, put in the extra hours. Yeah. Yeah, but they're the real people that are behind the scenes, making it all work.
at the state meet were run by Fred Rig, George Van Kara, and Dallin Gardener, Gardner, Gardner, with an I, which ensured the boys the state title, these three ran their fastest 5K times ever at the state meet, congratulations, John, your accomplishments in bringing the cross-country running state title back to Diamond High School, your dedication and hard work paid off, you are who make ASD great, and I do pass the mic, gentlemen, so tell us a little bit about the team.
I don't know, it's, I don't know, okay, well, first off, I just want to thank all my, my boys up here, you know, who worked very hard, who put in all the effort, and it definitely showed, definitely showed in our final performance there, throughout the season, there was this other team, Chugiak High School, actually, that they were beating us most of the races, and we kinda just kept our heads cool, you know, they'd be trash hocking us, but we, we let our performance at the end show, so.
You won when it mattered.
Exactly.
Just like to thank our coaches, and we're gonna miss these four seniors, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank all the coaches, they've been there since day one, they put in the extra hours, yeah, but they're the real people that are behind the scenes making it all work.
I'd like to thank also the coaches, and being super considerate about our schedules, like the guys with bleached hair up here, like we also swim, and we lost, so just thank them, and also, you guys have like, you guys also have these, so you should come up and get them, but, yeah. I'll just thank the coaches again, thank you guys.
And we'll let the coaches speak.
I think they should let the runners do the talking, or the running do the talking, these guys are great, they're awesome people, I'm also a teacher at Diamond, and these guys are phenomenal students as well, I don't know if you, if you know, but a lot of runners are really great students, and it's pretty fun to see them succeed in something they work really hard towards, so, it's great.
Yeah, it was, I don't know what to add, but it was just a great, it was just really inspirational to watch these guys all season, and, I mean, of all the years we've been coaching, we've been coaching them for 12 years now, and we never had a group of guys that just, that just had the psychological part of it down like this, they knew they were gonna win the whole time, and it was just a great thing to watch, so.
So, I was wondering if any of the seniors are gonna continue running, or maybe do any of you ski as well, what's your future hope?
I ski as well right now, I actually just got done the practice, and had to hurry over here, but I'm planning to run for UAA.
Ladies and gentlemen, just another awesome example of ASD kids, and an awesome example of the Diamond High School Lynx, go Lynx! They're not just little kitty cats, they're fierce. so much, and ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our focus on staff and students, thank you for making ASD great!
All right, so I'm gonna adjourn the work session, and, Dina?
I move that we move into executive session for the purposes of negotiations and personnel.
I'll second it, thank you, meeting adjourned.